I know.
But there's not enough.
I can say it too.
There's not enough.
There's a turnway.
Yep.
You've got houses, you've got the church and the house.
Yep.
Right there with the. You know my, you know my loss, he's like, well, let me just expand the road. He's like, they'll just expand the road. I said, they can't expand the road.
Um, I live on the first side of the building. But first, if you're going down this Cypress Branch, right, I'll sort them out. First development on the left.
You can expand that road right there.
Yes.
Until you get to Lebanon, then you can expand. They don't need to live in it.
Well, but I want to know why they're not going to make it up to the first. Not trying to make Moses grow, but you're like, you've got three hundred houses. The inner Cypress branch. Yeah. See, the Cypress branch has that, has that bridge that floods. Hurricanes, high clouds, full moons, it floods.
Yes.
Okay. So here's how you have, let's say, I don't know, a thousand houses that have one way in and one way out. It's of an actual disaster.
Well, even what about a mass natural disaster? It's all the same. Great population.
Oh, yeah, yeah. See, that's just got the.
Yeah.
Yeah. Pile, you were what? Pile hall up. But pile lane, I never remember which one it is, but that's. Who would do that again? What's going, do you know what's going? I think that State Street. Um, and towards Duke. Where that bike, um, parking lot is. But it's like. So we're also down to my church.
Town.
I've seen your.
Town.
In the town.
That's what I heard.
Performance. Poison line.
River side. So it's a lot.
Down by the bridge. Oh, are you. Around the. Yes.
Yes. When I came here, right?
Town. I, I know.
You're.
But you think so.
That's where I started. I'm kind of.
You're right. I think it was.
But then.
Still common here.
Yeah. Um.
But we're, we're the other side again. Um.
I heard. Some of my. They were. And you want to point your. What are you doing now? All right. We're in. So. And we, there's any. People. So we're. We're like. We're. But yes. It was. There's a land on. Conservation.
So, yeah. Well, we have. Obviously.
And when we. And it's to get. A, um. We get help with funding. From the state, we got this money. From the. Destiny out here. Every single district needed their. Pretty decent. To do. Which means they were called after. All procedures. Or operating. And built. So. Here to find. But I don't think that's for. Oh, did you? For sure. So why do this? I'm holding on for things that were.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Paul Davis. I'm the acting chairman tonight at the Kent County Planning Commission. In the absence of our chairman, Bill Jester, who will not be here tonight. I do have a couple of housekeeping things I would like to mention. First of all, if you have a cell phone, please turn it down or turn it off. Secondly, um, it appears that we'll be people tonight speaking in opposition, uh, which they do in all of our meetings. I would request that you have respect for the other side and don't be calling names and getting boisterous because I would not tolerate it. They're here to make an application. You have a right to say what you want to say. And thirdly, if there are people that can speak for your entire group, we would much rather listen to two or three people as opposed to twenty-five or thirty of you saying the same thing. You want to go home, just like we do. So think about it. And having said that, at this time, I call the meeting to order and we will start with the federal agents. Please rise. Thank you very much. This time we have a roll call for determination of a quorum.
Mr. Peterman.
Present.
Mr. Servon.
Present.
Mrs. Carter.
Present.
Mr. Galvery.
Here.
Mr. Mills.
Present.
Mr. Davis.
Here.
And Mr. Jester is absent. Mr. Chair, you have six present. You do have a quorum.
Thank you. Um, at this time, um, we'll have the, um, approval, need a motion to approve tonight's agenda. So we want to make a motion to approve it.
So moved.
To approve.
Second.
Move by.
Second.
Mills, second by Mr. Galvery. Roll call, please.
Mr. Peterman.
Present.
You mean yes?
Yes.
Mr. Servon.
Yes, to approve.
Mrs. Carter.
Present.
You gotta vote yes or no on a minute.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Galvery.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Mills. Mr. Mills.
Yes, to approve.
Mr. Davis.
Yes, to approve tonight's agenda. Thank you.
You have six yes in favor of approving tonight's agenda.
Thank you. This time we have the introduction and the public hearing instructions.
This public hearing is being conducted for the purpose of giving the citizens of the county the opportunity to present testimony in the application before the Regional Planning Commission. Everyone will have an opportunity to speak while statements are remade from the podium at the front of the room. All testimony given shall be sworn or affirmed. For the record, please give your name and address. Copies of any written statements or exhibits used during the hearing should be presented for identification and inclusion in the record. The record will remain open for two business days following tonight's hearing. For the application before the commission, the chairman will introduce the application. Then the applicant or representative will be given fifteen minutes to present the application. Then those in favor of the application will be allotted five minutes each to speak. Following that, those opposed to the application will be allotted five minutes each to speak. When everyone has had an opportunity to give testimony, the hearing on the application will be closed. No decision will be made by the commission tonight. The commission will hold a public business meeting next Thursday, June twelfth at six P M., at which time it will make a decision on the public hearing applications heard tonight. All information of record will be considered. A common vote of four members of the commission is required to make a decision. Anyone may attend the business meeting, but no new public testimony will be received. The public notice of this hearing was published on May ninth, twenty twenty-five, in the Delaware State News. Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Sarah. First one tonight's hearing is S L twenty-five dash O two, Creekside Reserve. Request the preliminary approval of a major subdivision of three hundred and one single-family lots located inside a growth overlay district. Their data sheet is as follows. Plan number and title. It's S L twenty-five dash O two, Creekside Reserve. Location is located on the east side of Locust Grove Road, approximately seven hundred and seventy-two feet south of Carolina Avenue and Edge Lane, and on the west side of the intersection of Cypress Branch Road and Abigail Lane, south of Dover. The owner is Margaret A. and William T. Peckling, Jr. Trust, five eighty Locust Grove, Dover, Delaware, one nine nine oh one. The applicant, Chef Land Development LLC, one six oh five four South Dupont Highway, Harrington, Delaware, one nine nine five two. The engineer is Morrison Ritchie Associates Incorporated, Philip L. Tolliver, P E, one one one, Ruth R. Drive, Newark, Delaware, one nine seven one one. The president's owning district is A C Agriculture Conservation. Leader of the court district is fifth leader of the court district, Commissioner Sweeney. School district is Caesar Rodney. Fire district is Magnolia. The size of lot is a hundred and sixty-five point oh two acres. Number of proposed lots is three hundred and one, single-family lots. Active open space is five point four eight acres or plus. Total open space is sixty-five point two eight acres minus. Stormwater management area is seven point eight three acres plus. Wetlands is six point oh oh acres plus. Total acres within the woodlands, thirty-one acres, point eight two acres. Average lot size would be eleven thousand, two hundred and six square feet. Minimum lot area is eight thousand, zero four six square feet. Maximum lot area is twenty-one thousand, seven hundred and fifty-five square feet. Relation to the growth zone is inside. Density is one point eight per acre. Streets, public to be construction in according, in accordance with the Delaware Division of Highway specifications. The water, Artesian Water Company. The sewer is Kent County. And the Kent County property identification note is N M dash oh oh dash nine oh nine five dash oh oh dash oh one dash two eight point oh 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 oh. Is there someone here to speak on behalf of the application? Please come forward and take the oath.
Sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do. Well, good evening. I'm Phil Tolliver with Morrison Ritchie.
Can you get a little bit closer to the mic? We want everybody to hear this tonight, okay? Thank you.
All right. Good evening. I'm Phil Tolliver with Morrison Ritchie Associates, uh, one eleven Ruth R. Drive, Newark, Delaware. And also with me tonight is, um, T J Schiff, um, the equitable owner of the property, uh, Carl Wilson with Traffic Group, and, um, John Pardee, attorney, in case there's any legal issues or questions that need to be resolved from a legal standpoint. So I'll try to be as pithy as possible and, um, and keep this, uh, under fifteen minutes, um, as, as Sarah indicated. The, um, so the project is on the, uh, as, as was indicated in the opening, opening, um, dialogue, is on the west side of Cypress Branch Road and the east side of Locust Grove. It's in, it's in the growth overlay zone. It's zoned A C and it's comprised of a hundred and sixty-five acres approximately. Uh, in March twenty twenty-five, uh, just recently, the Levy Court did vote to include this site, um, and they approved it in the Kent County Sewer Sewage Disposal District Number One. Um, the project, uh, as, as shown here, was designed in accordance with the, um, the Kent County zoning code and the subdivision ordinance. So we basically take your all's ordinances and we use that as a blueprint to prepare these projects. So this project is in compliance with your code, uh, as well as in compliance with the comprehensive plan. Um, I refer to something like this as a permitted use application or a buy right application. So there's no conditional uses or special exceptions associated with this project. Uh, there's also no wetland impacts, um, uh, which is good. And so it's a, it's a very environmentally friendly, um, project and, um, with no wetland impacts and so forth associated with that. From a site data standpoint, uh, three hundred and one lots, um, the required open space is two point oh seven acres and we provided, uh, six point four seven. Let me go to the next slide here if I could. There you go. Am I controlling the slide here or one of you guys? I am? Okay. Okay, I got it. Okay. All right. So that's just an over, overall exhibit of where the project's located. And everybody in the room, I'm sure, is, is familiar with the location at this point. Um, this is a synopsis of basically what was read before. Um, noteworthy, the code requires fifty-eight point eight seven acres of passive, I beg pardon, twenty-four point seven five acres of passive open spaces required. We provided fifty-eight point eight seven acres, um, well over double what the, what the code requires. From a, um, from an active open space, uh, standpoint, the code requires two point oh seven acres and we provided six point four seven, um, three times what the code requires in terms of active open space. Um, the, uh, the roads will be built to, uh, to Deldot standards. These are the, you know, the newest, the most recent Deldot, um, requirement is for the twenty-four-foot wide cartway with a two-foot, um, mountable curb and gutter on both sides. Remember the old days when Deldot had the code when it was twenty-two-foot wide cartways? And there was a lot of, you know, controversy about, is that wide enough? So this is the new code with, uh, with the wider twenty-four-foot wide cartways. Um, Artesian is the water provider and the public sewer will be provided by Kent County. Uh, a traffic impact study was, um, was conducted and, um, we met with, uh, and like I said, the traffic group, uh, Carl Wilson is here. His company is the one who proposed, or prepared the traffic impact study. Uh, a scoping meeting was done, um, with, with Deldot and we sat down with Deldot and looked at all the intersections that would be impacted by this project and, um, went over the layout with Deldot and the traffic impact study was subsequently approved by Deldot, um, with, uh, with the layout as shown. This is just an overall, um, exhibit that kind of shows the contours. And in general, um, the lay of the land is such that the contours are running from the north to the south down at Cypress Branch. So that's important because when you're engineering a project, you never want to fight Mother Nature, right? Because that's a losing battle every single time. So what we try to do is position the stormwater facilities where they need to be and, um, minimize earth moving to the extent that we can. The last thing we want is to have, you know, dump trucks with dirt running up and down Route thirteen and, uh, and State Street. So the site from a, from a, from an engineering standpoint, would, what I refer to as mass grade balance. So, um, no dirt's going to be, um, trucked in and no dirt's going to be, uh, hauled off of the site. So all the construction activity is going to take place on site. This is the road layout and you can see, um, the road layout was done in accordance with Deldot standards and Kent County standards. There's intersection spacing that, that Kent County requires, so we've, we've honored that. Um, and there's certain block lengths that are, uh, required and, and all those have been honored as well. So it's, it's code compliant in terms of Deldot and in terms of Kent County. This is where the single-family lots were posi, are positioned. Now, noteworthy, these lots, um, you all recently, I'd say probably, I don't know, five or six months ago, changed your bulk standards to allow for smaller lot sizes. This is, these are larger lot sizes. So we, we could have gone in and shrunk the lots up, right? And probably achieved a much greater density. And we could do that right now under a different application. But, um, we didn't do that, so we, we, we stuck with the ten thousand square foot lot size, which is what this is. And that was your, um, old requirements, um, and it's, that's just how we laid it out and that's what we, that's what we used for this project. Um, from a proposed landscaping standpoint, you can see where some of the landscaping would be proposed. Street trees would be throughout the entire community. Um, and then the, uh, the buffering would take place along Locust Grove and, uh, and Cypress Branch Road as well. And you guys know I'm a big fan of privacy berms and so forth. Um, and so we're going to propose those here as well. You can see the view cone as you're looking from, uh, Locust Grove or Cypress Branch, for that matter. Uh, we would like to have, you know, uh, privacy berms, uh, security berms, landscape berms, uh, throughout the community. And this is what we're envisioning here. So the berms would be rolling in nature, side to side, undulating back and forth. So it's not a synthetic wall of dirt that's just two dimensional. So we try to position these berms to make them look natural. Um, if you guys are familiar with the Rookery Golf Course down south a little bit, they have some really cool berms off of one thirteen there. And, um, and that's kind of similar to what we're, what we're thinking there. From a site amenities perspective, um, we try to position open space features to where people can see them, uh, from the entrance road. We found, and I refer to that as the inviteability factor. So, um, they, they tend to increase the velocity of sales, increase, uh, the success of the project. Um, and so what we're thinking right there towards the entrance would be a nicely prepared, uh, pavilion area and, uh, tot lot and a multi-purpose game court that could be, you know, pickleball. Pickleball is very popular these days, so maybe a pickleball could be done there. Or some kind of, um, multi-purpose, uh, facility that the residents could use. Um, and everything's walkable. So you have sidewalks on both sides of the streets and then you have the walking trails that we've shown. And you can see the walking trails kind of tie to other, um, pods of interest. You have the pergola and the gazebo and so forth. And with connecting walking trail that kind of meanders through the main, um, focal area of the community. And this is just a typical gazebo that, that could be used there and a typical tot lot. Multi-purpose game court. Again, the actual, um, makeup of the multi-purpose game court would be, uh, determined as we're working through, uh, the final engineering process and, and working with the county and the developer and, and ultimately the builder, um, to determine what the actual makeup would be. And then some sort of reasonably sized pavilion, um, probably with a mail kiosk in there. Um, in the old days, you know, you used to be able to have a mailbox in front of your driveway. And, um, the postal service did away with that. So now you have these, these, um, focal points and these kiosks for, for mail collection. And so something like this would be a handy area for, uh, the kids to hang out, you know, when they're waiting for the school bus and it's raining. This is a great spot for those guys to hang out, um, get your mail here and just like a, a, a community focal area. And then nice pergolas with planting and benches around there as well. And this is just the overall rendering that you can see here. Um, and noteworthy, I mean, you can see there's other open space pods in the community. Hope everybody can see my red clicker here. So this is the main gathering area here, but then there's also other, um, open space areas around the community that kind of are situated in behind some of these lots. Um, and those are very important as I'm getting it in here, uh, for, for a number of reasons. Um, but, uh, I'll get into that in just a second. So that's an overall, just a quick summary of, um, of the project. Um, from a, um, staff review standpoint, we did get the staff review report last week. And this is very similar to every other project that I've made a presentation with you guys for. Um, there's, uh, requirements that are required by the code. And then there's recommendations that, um, are, you know, just various recommendations that are made on each application, not just this one, but any application. Um, so in looking through all of the, um, the staff requirements, we're in agreement with all of those. So we gotta play by the rules. We gotta, you know, do what the code says. So the staff has enumerated a few requirements in there and we agree with all those. So that's not a, that's not a problem. Um, the recommendations, there were sixteen recommendations, um, and we, we are in agreement with most of those recommendations. Uh, of the sixteen, we're in agreement with eleven of them. Uh, but there's other, the first five are a little bit, um, challenging. They would, um, uh, cause, you know, significant construction issues, privacy issues, safety concerns. And, um, we just, we need to talk about those. So from a, um, from a, um, from a recommendation standpoint, the first recommendation I wanted to talk about was recommendation number one, where there was a recommendation to have another access point onto Locust Grove Road. Now, we looked at that originally and chose not to do, and decided not to do that for safety reasons. Um, Locust Grove Road, and I had my surveyors go out there to take four measurements all up along Locust Grove Road. It's seventeen and a half feet wide. It's a tar and chip farm lane, farm lane seventeen and a half feet wide. No shoulders and it would be very, very irresponsible to, at this point, before it's improved, to direct more traffic or any traffic to Locust Grove Road. Um, there was an exhibit that I sent to Sarah and, um, um, and Jess the other day. If you guys could pull that up. It's a, it's a satellite image of Google Earth. And I wanted to just share it for the audience to demonstrate kind of what I'm talking about. As you're standing on, it's probably right, yeah, it's probably that one right there. Keep going. It might be, yeah, right there. There you go. Okay, so this is Locust Grove Road. And it's just, if, if you guys know where the church is right there on Locust Grove. So it's just past the church right before we get to our property. Well, you can see, you know, Google Earth, if you get on Google Earth, they have this little yellow guy that you can click and drag and it'll show you what the street view looks like. So this is an actual sad, uh, street view of what, uh, Locust Grove looks like. Now, see the shadow right here? This is the Google Earth guy driving up this road in his truck, going this way, taking his snapshot. Now, if you, if you look at this guy, this, this passenger car right here, he actually has to pull off into the grass area to allow this car to pass. This is definitely not a safe situation. This is what I'm trying to illustrate. From an engineering standpoint, as a, as a P E, one of our main safeguards is to protect, you know, public safety and welfare. That's my job as a P E. And, um, I could not, in, in good faith, before this road is, is, is upgraded, I could not recommend bringing more traffic to this. It just would not be a responsible, safe thing to do. Now, after the road is upgraded, then that's fine. But we don't control this. We don't control, my client doesn't control many miles of Locust Grove Road. We have control over our frontage, but we don't have control over everything else. So if we were to take a, an intersection and put it on the Locust Grove, this is what our residents would be looking at. And if there's an accident here, that's, that's not on me. I can't, I can't, I can't recommend that and can't agree to that. Um, so, but you know me, we've made many concessions and we've compromised along the way and we're all about making everybody happy. So that's what we're going to try to do here. Okay? So I know there was some discussion about, um, a potential school coming on board at some point in the future. And we've all seen these applications with schools in the past. Uh, many times they move forward, many times they don't. Funding dries up, um, the school board finds another site. The economy tanks and suddenly there's capacity in Caesar Rodney School District and they don't want to spend the money here, they spend it somewhere else. The school might happen. It might and it might not, right? We just don't, nobody has a crystal ball and nobody knows for sure. Um, so what I would, if I could go back to the, the color rendering, if you read, so, if, if you read, that, that's good. We could, we could stay with that one just for a second. So this is the overall site plan of the school. And you can see, um, our site essentially is up in this quadrant. This is Creekside Reserve and here's the ball fields and everything. So they have, the school has a secondary access point that they're thinking about right here on Locust Grove. So it would be easy enough to line this up and, and work with the school and Deldot and so forth so that our entrance, if there was going to be an entrance in the future, we could align it with this. That's, that's the easy thing to do. It's the timing and so forth that's very problematic. Um, and again, this may never happen, right? This, this school may never happen. It might and it might not. If we could go back to the rendering real quick, the recommendation from the county is to make a connection. Deldot, although there was a comment in, in plus that, um, if the school goes forward, they would like to see a connection. There's other people that we've talked to at Deldot that, that indicated they would like to remain neutral throughout this approval process on whether or not there's another connection point here. If Locust Grove were a better road, we, this wouldn't even be a discussion, but it's not. It's an unsafe road right now. So we can't have, we can't have a physical connection right now. But what we could do, there's two parts that I would recommend. If you read through the county's recommendation letter, their last sentence of the recommendation says, if the commission chooses to, chooses not to require a full entrance, uh, onto Locust Grove, then they would, they, the county, would recommend that a shared use path and an internal connection be provided, uh, for pedestrians and bicycles. So we would agree to that, right? So we have, we have, um, sidewalks throughout the community. We have open space throughout the community. And then we have a multimodal path that could be built, um, up along Locust Grove Road. So we could tie all the sidewalk systems and all that into here, into, um, a multimodal path along there. We agree to that. Okay? So we agree to that recommendation. Um, the other thing we could agree to, and I think this should get to, get, do the trick here, we could strategically reposition some of these lots here to allow for a future, to, to allow for a right of way. So we would have the right of way there and could even build a certain length of stub road towards Locust Grove, stop it short of Locust Grove. And then if the school does happen and when Locust Grove is improved, Deldot could just very easily tie into that. The road's right there, the stub road's there, the right of way is there. Boom, connection made. That's a win-win situation. So we're not creating a safety concern now on a very unsafe road. Um, the county gets what they want. Deldot would be happy. It's a win-win situation. So that's how I would address that. We would give you the right of way, build the stub towards that, stop short of Locust Grove and Deldot could make that connection at a future time as, at their choosing. So it's a compromise. It's, in my opinion, it's a win-win-win situation.
Is that it?
That's it on that one. I do have the four more recommendations that I got to go through.
Go ahead.
Do you want to, do you want me to go through all four remaining or do you want?
Yes, you can.
Okay.
Make it brief.
The next, the next recommendation is, is item number two, which, um, refers to existing woodland. The next, the next recommendation is item number two, which refers to existing woodlands. Now, I don't, the, there, there's 30 some odd acres of woodlands. The code requires us to, and I don't know if, oh, this is fine. This right here, see this, see this area right in here? This is where the woods are. There's not a whole lot of woods on site. There's about 31 acres of woods. Right here is where the county is recommending to save the woods. To save all the woods, we would have, we would essentially lose 20 lots, have to reconfigure the entire road area in this area here. And, and that's just not tenable. We can't, we can't agree to that. We're already, you know, we only have to save 15.9 acres and we're saving 18.14. So we're already well, clearing way less than what we're allowed to clear. Now, again, in the spirit of cooperation and compromise, I would offer this. We can't lose 20 lots and reposition this road. But what we can do is, and I'll say this, MRA does a lot of work up and down the Atlantic seaboard, from Pennsylvania down to Florida and North Carolina, everything in between. And I'll use three states to illustrate a quick point for you. The state of North Carolina has 100 counties. Maryland has 23 counties, Delaware ha, 23 counties. Delaware has three counties. So together, you know, you have 126 counties. There's one county that has a 100-foot buffer from stormwater facilities, and that's Kent County, Delaware. Out of all those 126 counties, Kent County is the only one that's got a 100-foot buffer from stormwater that I'm aware of. I can't figure out what it is for, but it's there and we have to play by the rules. But I know there's probably some latitude and discretion. So if the county were willing to, see this pond right here? Right there? See that pond? Okay. On the north side of this pond right here, there's a, there's a large 100-foot strip of land that essentially if the county would agree to a 25-foot buffer instead of a 100-foot buffer, I could then take this entire pond, move it away from the woods up north, and I could save about an acre and a half of trees. So that would be a compromise there. If the county's willing to go from 100 feet to 25 feet, we could move that entire pond 75 feet out further to the north and save another acre and a half of woods. So that's my recommendation there. The next one is active open space. Now, you heard me talk about the inviteability factor. The recreation, the recommendation here is to take the, this active open area and move it back into here. And we're not interested in that either. That would basically kill what I refer to as the inviteability factor. We need these focal points up front so folks can see them. They get interested in the project. It sends a subliminal message that, hey, something cool's happening back in the project. I'm gonna go check it out. We've noticed that that helps with sales. We don't want languishing sales. We don't want zombie communities. We want flourishing, healthy, vibrant communities with very high, you know, home prices. And we want to see people's property values rise. We don't want to see things languish and take forever to get through. So we need the inviteability factor, and this is a focal area. We're envisioning right here, the school bus could very easily come in. The kids are waiting here and then the school bus comes out. That's where you want this focal area, not in the back. The other thing is, is that we like to get these, these facilities built sooner in the, in the sales process, not later. Back in here would probably be phase, I don't know, three or four or five. This is gonna be, you know, in one of the first couple of phases of construction. So we like to get these improvements done sooner to give people the ability to enjoy them instead of waiting forever. And there's communities out there that I can, I can name. I've been doing this a very long time. And when you wait too long to the very end, owners get disgruntled, they get ticked off and they're like, where's my pavilion? Where's my facility? Well, it's not gonna be until much later phase. We don't want to deal with that, with that. So we would like to keep it the way we have it. We've been doing this a very long time and this is where, this is where we propose it. So again, this is totally code compliant. So that's number three. Number four is another one that we, we definitely cannot, cannot agree with. You know, the number, see these grassed areas here behind these lots? These serve more than a purpose than what you might think. Now, the county's recommendation is to eliminate this open space and just make it all lots. Just take the rear lot lines and make them touch in the middle. The problem with that is we got swales in back there and drainage and then people build fences on their back property line and that sure enough blocks up the drainage. And then we have problems that we need to respond to. I've seen that happen many times. So when we deal with people like Jared Atkins, the program manager for Kent County, Conservation District, he would love to see something like this because you're not putting swales on people's backyards. You're not dealing with fences and obstructions in the swales. You keep the utilities, the drainage improvements off the people's lots. So we, we need to leave this the way it is. It serves a purpose. It will be maintained by the open space. We've got excellent connectivity and we can, we can demarcate these areas to where people know where the open space is. I know that was one of Sarah's concerns before. So we could very easily demarcate where this open space, this little stem here I'm referring to. We can, we can demarcate where that is and, and, you know, the maintenance people would be able to, to maintain all of those. Without getting into too many details, but I, just real quickly, we also use these open space areas for what's called swapping earthwork. So when you have a project like this, and this is gonna bore some people, but when you have a project like this, you have topsoil on site and then you have good structural fill underneath that topsoil layer. The, the topsoil can't be used for structural fill. So you need to use these, many times what you do is you, you basically dig a borrow pit or a swap area. You take the good dirt out, the structural dirt out, and then you, you replace it with the topsoil. You don't want to do that on people's lots. So you, you try to do that in open space. So these areas from a construction standpoint helps to ensure that we're not having trucks driving up and down Cypress Branch Road hauling topsoil off and then bringing good structural fill dirt in. That's not what we want. Remember when I started this dialogue, I said that the objective here was to have this be a self-sufficient project that we're not seeing all this construction activity outside with fully loaded dump trucks of dirt. So that's, these are very important to that regard. It gives us the flexibility from a construction standpoint. So for the drainage reasons and the utility reasons and the fences not being in there, we want, we would like to leave this the way that it is. The last one is, and this is a huge security concern. There was a comment about wrapping these stormwater facilities with walking trails. And I've done that before. There's a couple jobs and, and there's a place and there's a time for that. This is not the project to do that. It is not a good idea to direct kids and foot traffic around a wet pond in isolated areas, particularly if you look through the, the planning packet here. What they've shown is a bunch of trees in here saved with a meandering trail through the trees. That's a huge, huge security concern. There's been, I mean, I don't want to get off too much of a tangent, but there's been people that have been attacked and ladies have been attacked before. It happened in Maryland, it's happened other where, where you have isolated trails in wooded areas in secluded situations like this. We do not want a trail behind people's lots in wooded areas. That's a huge security concern for us. So we can't, we can't agree to, to comment number, to recommendation five, we cannot agree with that. But all the other ones from, from six, you know, up through 16, we, we do agree with. We'll work with the county. They asked for some additional landscaping. We can certainly work with Sarah's office and give them all that. There's some other requirements about when you can initiate tree clearing. And when you can't, that's not a requirement, but in the spirit of cooperation, we're agreeing with all those. So I think we've, we've made a pretty good attempt to, to do almost everything the county's asking for. And I think we've shown a reasonable explanation as to the first five, why we can't do it and where we can't, offer some compromises to make everybody happy. So with that said, I would just close by saying, this is a by right project. This is not a conditional use. We agree with all of the requirements of the code. And we would respectfully request approval of this project for those reasons. So with that said, I'll be happy to answer any questions.
I have a couple concerns myself. I'm very concerned about the reasoning for not putting a entrance out there on Lotus Road. Have you looked at the traffic count on that road by any chance, Del Dot?
Yes.
What's, what's the figures?
I'm sorry?
What are the figures?
What are the figures for the traffic count on Locust Grove Road?
Yes.
I would, I would bring up Carl Wilson with the Traffic Group. He's the expert that prepared that. He'd be able to speak more eloquently than I could. You have to give your name and address.
Sure. Carl Wilson with the Traffic Group.
You gotta take, take your oath of office. Gotta take, swear on.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do. Carl Wilson, the Traffic Group, 9900 Franklin Square Drive, Suite H in Baltimore, 21236. We did prepare the traffic impact study for this site and Del Dot didn't provide any distribution of any trips of ours down Locust Grove Road. So they, they distributed all the traffic to the other roads surrounding it, but nothing to Locust Grove itself.
Let me ask a question. Is that a public road funded by Del Dot?
It is.
You maintain it?
Do I maintain it?
Del Dot, yes.
Yes.
So what's the problem about putting, other than money, what's the problem about putting the, the ingress, egress there for the subdivision?
Again, it's the width of the road that's outside of our property frontage. So, so there's the whole distance to the south. That's a very narrow road, only about 17 feet wide.
Sounds to me like they'll close it down. It sounds like it's too safe. But anyhow. So Del Dot, I'd say you answered my question. You don't have, you don't have a, you actually don't have a traffic count for that road. That's the bottom line. Is that true?
Well, we, we have, the, the only count we have is at the intersection of Sorghum Mill and Locust Grove Road. So that intersection's to the north and that, that section of Locust Grove is already improved to the north. So a lot of that traffic up to the north is already serving the subdivisions that are there. But it's, it's providing additional access to the south that we're, we're concerned with.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Tarver, you can come on back again. There, there's a lot of concern about this, about this entrance. A lot of concern. I have a concern about it. I think some of the commissioners do. You're saying that a compromise would be that you would build a driveway out to the right of way and then whenever it comes down the pike of the school, that you wouldn't have a problem? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
But you don't want that on the road for some reason?
I'm sorry?
You don't want to build it out to the road so people can use it?
That's correct. That would be irresponsible, in my, in my opinion. That's correct.
Is it because of safety reasons? Or is it because you don't want to spend the money?
No, 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 no. It's, it's safety, it's safety reasons. That's, you saw the Google Earth image. The guy in the red car had to pull his tires off into the grass to allow the Google truck to go forward. That's not a, that's not a safe situation. It's just not. So we could, we could, to recapitulate, we could grant the right of way all the way, all the way through, through the community to Locust Grove, build the stub road, stop it short, and then Del Dot could make that connection when Locust Grove, I just want to get this on the record for the minutes, when, when the balance of Locust Grove is improved by Del Dot, then they could make that connection into our community.
I guess the next question on that, will you put it in writing or will the developer put it in writing that he will in fact do that?
I believe it would be part of the testimony here. And if, and if you guys approve it, it would be, it would, that would run with this approval, if I'm not mistaken, John.
Then I'll be more, more, more to the point. Question is, I'm gonna ask you now, will you in fact put the entrance in when Del Dot does the work down the road for the school district or whatever it may be? They may do road improvements. I would imagine they're gonna do road improvements first, right before, right before the school. So are you willing to give us a statement besides this testimony that you will in fact sign an agreement to do that at such time?
Can you?
Do the intersection?
Do the intersection make the connection to Locust Grove?
Yes.
When, when the balance of Locust Grove is improved?
That is correct.
So the discussion here.
Have a look, Commissioner.
The discussion here was, sorry, is, is the timing. So if, we can't agree to make a connection to Locust Grove in its unimproved state, it's just unsafe. I think I've satisfactorily demonstrated that in this testimony. I've shown you pictures. You could see the guy's tires in the grass. So it's the timing. So if this, if this school gets built 30 years from now, are we supposed to be, is my client supposed to be on the hook for 30 years waiting for this Locust Grove to be improved? That's, there's a little bit of ambiguity there. What I could say is, we can work with Del Dot and we would be willing to put that in writing, if that's what you want, that we could work with Del Dot to give them the right of way, provide a stub towards Locust Grove and that they could make that connection at, at some point when Locust Grove is improved. We would be willing to put that in writing.
I need to meet with staff, I guess, between now and next week and, and tell them what you're gonna do. But I'm really concerned about that. Keep in mind, and you said it yourself, they may not build that school for 30 years.
Right.
So how about if they come down there and Del Dot does it a lot, they upgrade the road? So you're gonna come back and say, well, you know, we said we'd do it when the school's built and the referendum's been turned down, so we're not gonna do it.
Well, no, it's not, it's not really about the school, Commissioner Davis, as much as it is the safety of the road.
I'm talking about, no, hold on a minute. I'm talking about the road itself.
Yep.
If Del Dot upgrades that road.
Yep.
Then I feel you should be obligated is to comply and put that entrance in there. I'm not talking about the school at all now, because we don't know what's gonna happen.
Yeah, I think we're, we're, we're saying the same thing. We're in agreement with that. Yeah.
If they upgrade the road.
Yes.
On Lotus Road, you're willing to put that ingress and egress, right?
Yes.
Good. Everybody get that? Okay, good.
Yep.
All right, now I'm gonna open it up to the commissioners. Anybody? Mr. Mills?
I got a question. I've been in the, I gotta commend you for one thing. The horseshoe drive up there that you put on Cypress Branch, where going, school buses going in. I am in the school bus business, been in it for 50 years. And I am in that this traffic problem now is a disaster trying to get kids picked up on the main route. We've got to get them, get those school buses off the road and get them inside that, any development, not just this one, but any of them. I know Denrec Soil Conservation have all got their regulations that the engineers have to meet. But you ever, never hear anything about where are these kids gonna get picked up in a safe area? Now, 300 homes in there will produce probably 100 kids going at different levels of going to school. I want, what I want to know is how far from that entrance is it to that last house in the father's house away by way of the street? Because if it's over a half a mile, that, that parents in those houses can require that bus to have to come all the way back in there. And this is my concern right now. Now, the next question is, is you showed a pavilion. Where was that pavilion at for kids to be able to pick up?
It's, it's right there at the entrance, close to that horseshoe road. So the bus comes in, it could go out, the bus could come in.
But where is the pickup point for that bus? When that bus comes in?
Well, we would have to work exactly with the school.
Well, I'm looking at right now with the school because now we go back a little bit here and I haven't heard anything in your testimony yet where the transportation supervisor of Caesarotti signed off on this. Now, I do know that two years ago, we passed a regulation where all. Now, I do know that, uh, two years ago, we passed a regulation where all applications had to go to the transportation supervisors, and we haven't had one transportation supervisor ever come back and sign off on those since that, since we got that passed. And the reason for it is either they're not gonna, or they don't care, I don't know which it is, but I know one thing, I care how these kids get picked up on this bus. And I think we need to consider, uh, how these kids, where are they gonna get picked up? Where the cars are gonna stop when they come to, uh, bring their kids to a point? Like I say, we've gotta get these school buses off these roads of these kids being picked up. What I'm, 'cause I, I do, I really commend you for putting that horseshoe drive in there, but I wanna know exactly where that bus could stop and pick those kid, or exit those kids.
Sure. Yeah, I can't speak for the school. I just can't do that. And, and they'll, they'll have an opportunity to, um, coordinate where the school bus, um-
No, no, the school will not coordinate where they're picked up inside of a development.
Well, I, I have no control o, I, over where a school bus stops.
That's what I'm asking you. Where would you suggest?
I would suggest putting it just where you said.
Where they could put those, put those kids, where they could be picked up in a safe area and the cars could stop and unload your kids or what? And then the next question I wanna know is a half a mile from that entrance up on Cypress Road back to the father's house in there?
Yeah, it's more, it's gonna be more than a half a mile for sure. And so you would have multiple-
If it's a half a mile, then those parents can require that school bus to go, come all the way back there to pick those kids up.
Sure.
We got a problem. Especially if we don't have no other exit getting out of that development.
Yeah, that's why we, and look, I agree with everything you're saying. I have four kids myself. So I, we're saying, we're saying the same thing. That's why we have two access points, not one. Um, and there, I would suspect there's gonna be a, the main pickup probably would be right there where, where it makes sense at the entrance. We don't want the kids walking out here on Cypress Branch Road. We all agree with that. So we wanna bring them into the community, and that's one of the reasons why we wanted the pavilion there, not in the back. Um, that way, this is the main spot, but there's probably gonna be some other support pickup points within the community.
I'm looking at the-
Okay. Yeah. Yeah, there's the, this is the main pavilion area here. So this is where we would envision the main pickup point to be. But certainly depending on, um, pupil needs, there, there would likely be additional spots to pick up along the other, other intersections within the community. And that may fluctuate, Commissioner Mills. I mean, if you have, uh, kids that graduate and they move on, and then you got somebody else that, you know, they're closer to this intersection, I would suspect that through the life of a project, your pickup spots might change depending on the pupil, uh, location. Okay. Okay, and, uh, have questions? Denise?
I have a question for you. Do you have any problem with putting the, uh, bus stop right in the middle of that development? You've built a nice pavilion, you've built a nice gazebo, you've built, you know, for the mailman and all, place for the kids hang out. Could you consider the kids and, and have a bus stop right there?
We could, sure, yeah, we could do that.
Right, and-
Where, where do you, where do you want it? You want it somewhere in the middle here?
Yeah, right in the middle.
Yeah, we could work-
Where the bus can come in, where the kids can all walk pretty much-
Commissioner Peterman, the cha, we don't, we don't have any problem with that at all. The challenge is, is that I can't speak for the school board. If they say they don't want it there, then we got a problem. So as long as the school board's okay with it, we would be in agreement with that.
And you, and do you contact the school board?
We can, yeah.
Well, will you?
Yes, we will.
Okay.
Yes, we will. Yes, sir, we will. Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Carter?
I have a cup, uh, I never realized the importance of having two exits or entrances, but especially exits, in a development. So until I got on the commission. I understand what you said about the road not being upgraded the way it should be. And you're willing to put in just kinda like a stub. Well, the, well, what you build out to the end of that, which will be very close to the road, will that be made in a Del Dot record requirements?
Yes.
That whole stub would be literally ready to go when you, when, when you feel it's needed, or when, or no?
Yes, we would agree to, reiterate, Mr. Davis, we would agree to provide a Del Dot-designed spec road up to Locust Grove, stop it short, and then when that Locust Grove is, is constructed to its proper state, then Del Dot could make that connection to a road that's already gonna be there, that my client would build.
And I know that there's concerns about having too many entrances on roads. So I'm sure Del Dot would want you to have that stub directly across from whatever road is gonna come from the school, soon as the school is built.
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
Well, that's gonna be difficult if you don't even know if the schools go. Right, so, so is, is your development fit for a spot that you can have the stub be right across from where the school would?
Yeah, a hundred percent. Um, sir, if we could go back to the school exhibit for the benefit of the commissioners? So, okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna bear with me here.
Go ahead.
You can barely see, see this house right here?
Yes.
There's a house there, and it shows up better on my rendering, actually. Let's go back real quick to the color rendering, and then I'm gonna come back to this. Okay, so here's the, here's the potential school. See this lot right there?
Yeah.
Their stub or their connection is across this guy's dining room. I would not recommend that, right? Somebody lives here, and you don't want lights coming and shining in your front door every time somebody leaves a football game at night and so forth. So what I would recommend, let's work with the school and let's find a more suitable location so that we could have some kinda stub right here and line it up with a future road that the school would build. Now, if we go back to, so the answer, um, Commissioner Kertcher, is yes, we can coordinate with school. If we could go back to the school site plan real quick. Okay, here's the stub, here's the connection right here. So see, it, it kinda, it connects to Locust Grove right across from this guy's house. That's not the greatest, but all they gotta do is just put a little curve in this and make the connection point come right there.
Okay.
So yes, we could easily, easily accommodate that.
Now, I'm, everybody likes these horseshoe entrances that you have. I need some clarification, 'cause I can see it being a big mess as well. Would they both be entrances and exits, or just the one-way?
Oh, no, uh, full access. Yeah, so if we go back to the site plan, it's a full-access movement. So, um, Del Dot would require and is requiring, and we have agreed to, a full-access movement. So you'd be able to take a left, a right, left in, right out. It's a full-access, two-way streets. There's no one-way movement here whatsoever.
And that, Sarah, I, I just need some help with that, because to me that doesn't-
So what's the distance between the two?
The distance between this intersection and that intersection? Oh, gosh. Uh, I would just guess, Sarah, I would say, oh goodness, six hundred to eight hundred feet?
That's, that's plenty. Okay. All right. You have to, you're gonna be putting, I call it a multi-modal path. I, I guess there's a new, new term for it. But that's also going to go along Locust Grove, correct?
Yes.
It will. I guess I just don't understand why we couldn't put an, an entrance there, but, um, let me see. I think you went through all my questions. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay, uh, Mr. Yav.
Actually, you've answered all my questions except for one. Um, it's one, um, do we have any idea of how many school age, school age children will, you're anticipating will be in this development?
Can you, can you stand up and give your name? And would you be, can you go to the microphone so the people online can hear?
You gotta take, you gotta take to the oath before you can talk.
State your name.
Hi, my name is Kim Petters.
Ms. Petters, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Kim Petters. My address is 493 Sedgwick Drive, and I spoke to the school district yesterday, sir. And they told us in a development such as this one, you can expect at least, they say children, so it could be one, it could be four, in one out of every three homes. And I did pull a list of this development, plus the other forty developments within the Caesar Rodney District that we're currently building in. And they'd expect another, according to Levy Court, another twelve hundred students that we have to figure out where to put in our school district, where all but three schools are already maxed out on capacity. But I'll get to that. I just wanted to answer that question.
Oh, wait, is, is-
Thank you. Any other commissioner questions?
Yeah, I, I'm not finished with the question. Thank you. So, um, so we're looking at twelve hundred or less, or in that ballpark of, of-
All the developments.
Okay, I'm, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I'm just-
Just this one, sir? It would be one to four hundred students.
Okay, so one to four hundred.
And I know that's a big range, but that's one to four children.
Right, so there's, there's just two issues in my mind. One is, is something that I'm assuming that you're going to, to address la, later on, and which is, has to do with, which has to do with the capacity of the school system in order to absorb these students. Um, that's not my question, though.
Hang on, yeah, but that's-
That's not my question.
Hang, yeah.
That's, that's not my question, but that is an important-
Commissioner, if I could, just for audience participation purposes, I made the misunderstanding that you were part of the developers' team, and I didn't know if you were or you weren't. We have, everybody's gonna get the opportunity to speak in public comment. I, I made a mistake. I should not have let you speak at that time, and I apologize for that, and I apologize to you. I just didn't know, I made a mistake. So, and for audience participation, everybody's gonna get their chance to speak at the appropriate time.
It's, it's okay, it got us the answer that we, that we needed to have this, to have this, uh, question asked, uh, so it, all's good. Um, so we're looking at one to four hundred. Um, well, it won't be one, so it's gonna be closer somewhere in that range. Um, as far as whether the school has, the schools have the capacity to absorb, uh, additional students is an important issue, but not the question that I have. I'm, I'm mainly concerned about, and you said you have four children, is, is how, is where do you see these, uh, school-age children recreating, um, throughout the day, the week, the weekends? And do they, if they don't have, um, adequate means to do that within this facility, uh, what is, how do they leave this facility, uh, on their bikes and so forth to go to wherever they would go to recreate if the school had been built? Of course, that would have been when I was a kid, we would go down to the school areas 'cause they always had large, open spaces. But without the school, I'm just wondering where these kids, um, go.
Well, I mean, i, if, if you want me to share my personal, uh, experiences as a young boy, I would be back in the woods, probably up to no good-
Yeah.
-to where my parents couldn't see me. Um, and I would suspect that young kids probably haven't changed, I'm not that old, but, uh, that's probably where I would be hanging out. But anyway, um, these are larger lots. These are the ten, remember I said this is the ten thousand square foot lot? So these are the larger lots. These are not, your code allows us to go to a five thousand square foot lot. So a ten thousand square is a, is a fairly sizable lot. And, um, so I would say that they would probably be in their lots, in their backyards playing, probably on their bicycles riding around, um, probably in this. The other area I would, I would do is we used to get all my buddies, you know, I was a young, young kid, we would play pickup football games or frisbee or whatever, and we would find the biggest open space area that wasn't on, if it was in my neighbor's yard, that's, you know, he, he had to deal with it. But this is, this is a great area right here, a big, huge area. It's bigger, you know, than, than we would, we would have when I was growing up. But that would be another area that, just open space areas like that throughout the community, just to get up a frisbee game or a, a football game or play catch or whatever. So that's why we have, that's one of the other reasons why we have these open space areas. These are, this is a, you know, this plan is a little bit deceiving. So these areas are actually quite large throughout the community. And so they would congregate in the open space and then, um, you know, in the, in the main recreational area as well.
Okay, so I, I wasn't able really to, to grasp the, the, uh, the area of these open spaces. So you're saying that the open spaces are adequate enough where, um, where dogs can run around, people can throw frisbees, people can do things like that?
Absolutely, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Are there any other questions from the commissioners? Are there any other questions? Okay, thank you very much, Mr. Tolliver.
Thank you.
And now we're gonna open it up for anyone that's in favor of this application. You may come forward, take the office of the attorney. Anybody in favor of this application, come forward.
If there's anyone joining us online that would like to speak in favor of this application, please indicate by raising your electronic hand or pressing star three if you're joining us by phone.
No one on the, uh-
No one online at this time, Mr. Chair.
Is anyone in the public wants to say they're in favor of it? If not, we're gonna move it on to those that are apparently opposed to it. Uh, we have a lot of people here tonight. I wanna go home, too. So, I know what's gonna happen, we've seen it happen in the past. Twenty-five people get up, twenty-five people say the same thing. If you can kinda keep that thing down to somebody in your community that can speak for a lot of, a lot of you, I would really appreciate that. But are you speaking for everybody? I'm not ready yet. You're awfully jumping late. I know you wanna talk. So, just a curiosity. And then you can come up and talk, and have all us talk. I may be actually against this, uh, this project. Raise your hand. Just wanna get an idea. All right, thank you. Okay. Who wants to talk first in our position? You got the floor. You've already been sworn in, so you'll be fine.
I, I would like to apologize for speaking on your term. I didn't realize that this, I didn't realize the process, so I would like to start by saying that. Um, so my name is Kim Petters, 493 Sedgwick Drive, and when I said one to four hundred, I meant one hundred to four hundred students. So, um, I'd like to start by saying that I am not necessarily against building. I believe in freedom. I believe in property rights. I believe if these gentlemen would like to do what they want with this land, that they should be able to. That's America. I, I served this country and I served for those rights. My question and my concern is, those who are approving all of the developments, we still have, if, if we were to include this one, out of the forty-one developments, and some have been being built a long time ago, some are wild quail, you know, they still have some room for homes, and some are brand-new developments that they just started building, and zero are built and three hundred are coming, okay? So the total of that is about two thousand new homes not built yet, including this one here in the Caesar Rodney District alone, only that school district, okay? Nothing outside that. And where my concern lies, so I have, I have a handful of degrees that I got in the military. One's in education, one is in public health, and one is in medical administration. So my first concern was in education. I spoke to those at the Caesar Rodney School District, and they informed me that all of our schools, besides three, are in fact over capacity. And the ones that aren't over capacity, for example, one of them is Charlton, and that's because the children who have special needs, we absolutely cannot go outside of the student ratio there. So that, they're not accepting any more kids. That's why. In fact, um, the Caesar Rodney School District, because we need new schools, because we're busting at the seams, they submitted a certificate of necessity to ask the state for help in funding, and then of course the rest would go to referendum. Um, and that, we need help both for building and operational. And the state said no. The state denied every single letter of necessity request to every single district in the entire state last year, and they're set to do the same this year. And the reason, well, I don't wanna say the reason, 'cause I don't wanna misspeak. Um, now my concern is, in our entire state, which Caesar Rodney is included in this, just in renovations in our schools, we need one billion dollars just to fix what we have. And I'm not against building. What I'm against is not building responsibly. If we put the cart before the horse, we're gonna put ourselves in a position where we're putting, building new developments, we're not only just putting it back on the, on the backs of the taxpayer, we're putting it on the backs of the teacher, who now has to have forty-five kids in a classroom. I, I would also like to point out, and I assure you, this is not towards anyone, I promise. I, I literally love everybody. I, Caesar Rodney School District teachers, although we're the largest district in the county, we have the lowest-paid teachers. So, we're already looking at operation, okay, one minute left, uh-oh, one minute left. So, all right, hospitals. Wait times are already really bad at Kent General. The beds that are available, so I, one of my degrees, I actually was the non-commissioned officer in charge of the NASA clinic at Langley. We had 14 providers. I can tell you, we don't have the medical infrastructure at all. We, go ahead and try to book a dermatology appointment. Try to get your kid in mental health. We don't have the mental, and also, we keep talking about roads. Has anyone tried to turn off of Sorghum Mill, or I mean, off of Cypress Branch onto Sorghum Mill? It's nearly impossible. And what about fire? Has anyone's...
I'd really prefer you didn't clap after this time. She's doing a commendable job, and anybody speaking will do that. But it slows our process down. You want to thank her, or anybody speaking after bidding, that would be fine. But please, don't clap because that takes time. And I'm gonna try to get everybody that we can. And we only allow five minutes. You've got about two minutes left. Thank you.
Yes, sir. I will, I will speed it up. I would also like to say, the area that we're building this, they don't have any police. We are assigned, we are not assigned to anybody. We, I live across from this development. We have zero police. We rely on troop three as backfill. We, we cannot afford a new police department. And has anyone spoken to our first responders and asked them if they can handle thousands and thousands of more people? And then, of course, I would just like to say, although we're following the laws, and that's what it's about, and these gentlemen are making every, every, they're trying as hard as they can to follow the laws.
Your five minutes is up.
Sometimes laws have unintended consequences.
Thank you for the comments.
Sorry, sorry.
Thank you, thank you.
My name is Rebecca Campbell. I'm from 21 North Main Street, Magnolia.
Hold on, please. You've got five minutes.
Yes.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do. I am a realtor, I am a teacher, and I am prior military. And I have fought for many of these developments that are going in. I agree that, hey, everybody wants to come to Delaware because they think it's cheaper, there's no, low taxes. I'm from Jersey. I'm a transplant, too. I get that. But I just made a couple notes because I don't want to go over my five minutes. So, I, just excuse me that, you know, it just kind of rambles on. But these are some of the things that I have brought up as a town councilman, also for the town of Magnolia. I was a town councilman for three years. I also did the comprehensive plan back in 2016. And I fought for the same things that I'm going to bring up here. It is negligent to build and not to think before you build, because once you build and you can't fix the problems that you have now created, then we have a bigger problem. Aside from the schools, I'm a teacher. We have 35 to 36 kids in class right now, and let me tell you something. They don't do like they used to do. They don't listen, and it's very hard to contain and to actually teach kids at 36. Now, you're talking about 40. Lake Forest, the school was built in 1930. They, they were max capacity 10 years ago. Caesar Rodney has 2,600 students graduating, I mean, excuse me, at the high school. 2,600 kids. Where are they going? You can't build a school. You have to build four, because we need a kindergarten, we need an elementary, we need a middle school. We already have three middle schools that feed into the high school. Aside from that, the roads cannot accommodate the weight of the developments. I can tell you right now, I have to actually spend $10,000 to fix my steps on the State Street. It's actually not. It's actually North Main Street. I live right on the main street. The roads and all the trucks coming through that they said they're not going to come through, my steps are falling apart. My infrastructure for my chimney is falling apart because of the pounding and this, that, and the other that they say they're not going to use. On top of that, as a realtor, inventory is great, but you have to be responsible. You have to think about all these other things. As a former Del Dot worker who worked for the Department of Transportation for the engineer, you, I don't understand why levy court isn't requiring, because we had to require, that everybody who wants to do anything, development, house, whatever, they have to actually go to the transportation office for the Caesar Rodney School District or the school district. They had to go through levy court, and they had to go through Del Dot, because our rules at Del Dot were different. Just in Del Dot, five years ago, you needed 170, 175 square feet of frontage to have your driveway wrapped around. Developments are different. And I don't know if the policies and rules have changed, but I can tell you right now that unfortunately, these gentlemen have been misled, and they don't know what the policies, rules, and regulations are of that. Because you have to get that signed off before you do anything else in Kent County. If you're...
Excuse me. I, I don't mind you saying what Del Dot does they don't do, but that's not why we're here tonight. I really want to hear about, since you live there, more about being a resident, why you're opposed to it. I don't want to get into Del Dot policy and why we don't do this, or why we don't do that. So, you got a couple minutes left, so...
Okay.
Okay, I appreciate that.
I understand what you're saying. I think all this kind of runs in together. But in the town of Magnolia, for instance, it's incorporated. That means there's no funding coming in. And all these different things that this is impacting, it's impacting. There's not ADA compliant sidewalks in the town of Magnolia. Nothing has been improved. The roads are not improved. There's no funding to improve the roads. So, it falls on us, the taxpayer, but it also falls on the town of Magnolia to figure out, hey, how are we gonna fix our water main breaks that are happening because of the pounding and the infrastructure that's not there? On top of that, you're talking about the amount of wildlife that's being displaced. There's 400, 4,219 houses that are slated to be development, developed. That's just developments. That's not including somebody coming in here and saying, hey, I want to build a house. If you go off of the, if the...
Time's up. Sorry. Your time is up.
Well, just one more thing. For the development and using what we're supposed to use, it's 2.5 kids per each development for the household. That's 750 just in this one.
Thank you very much.
It's over 3,000 for all of them.
Thank you for your testimony. No, no clapping, please, please. Next person? Hold on a minute. Commissioner has a question. Sarah?
Yes. Sarah, I could give a stab at this, but you would do it much better. Can you inform the audience what our responsibilities are and are not? Because there's an awful lot of things that are being brought up that I, that are important, and they, and they really need to be addressed by our state, and aren't often enough, or aren't being addressed maybe quick enough for some people's likings. And, but they're not necessarily our purview here, and we're required by certain laws to abide by certain principles in how we apply our vote, say, next week on this project. And, and so, I, I think it would be helpful for everybody to kind of know where that line is, so we don't start getting into state politics and, and, and a lot of other issues that really aren't part of our purview. Could you do that for me, please?
Certainly. To make it, to keep it fairly simple, land use, right, what's on the screen, development, zoning, things of that nature, are exclusively the purview of local government. So, that is your purview here. Roads in Kent County are, with the exception of municipalities like Camden or Dover, roads in Kent County, roads in the state of Delaware, are exclusively the purview of the Department of Transportation. Schools in Delaware are, it is a mix of local school boards and the state of Delaware. All regulations are originated by the state. Funding is a mix of state and the local school boards, although it should be noted that, I believe it was in 2005, the levy court instituted a surcharge on building permits. So, since then, every building permit we've issued has had a surcharge added to it based on the value of the permit. Part of that surcharge goes to local fire companies, and a separate surcharge goes to the school district. So, while levy court has no purview in the realm of education, they have acknowledged that development has an impact, and they have tried to do something to, to offset that cost. And at this point, millions of dollars have been dispersed to both fire companies and schools, and will continue to do so. Does that help, Mr. Goffrey?
It does. I, I just want you all to know that we have a rather limited area in which we're able to, to make change and to impact some of these other important issues. When we step beyond that limited area, we actually open ourselves up to, we open ourselves up to be sued and, and for it to be revoked. So, we try very hard to see where we can push and where we can't, staying within, within our purview. So, I just want you to know that we respect everybody's opinion and what you're having to say, and a lot of the issues you're bringing up are issues that we talk about amongst ourselves and are concerned about as well. But when it actually comes down to what we're doing here, we have to stick within the purview that we're given.
I, I agree with that. We just don't want to get in the weeds. There's a lot of things we have no control over. So, next person, you have five minutes or sooner.
Sir, can you state your name?
I swear.
No, can you state your name?
Alan Claycomb.
Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give today is the truth?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, I'm not quite as eloquent a speaker as the first two, but I'll give it my best. But I 100% back them up. Our schools are Caesar Rodney schools, as a parent, are busting at the seams. And the kids' education, I can tell you, no matter how magnificent our teachers and staffs are, their education is being affected. Overcrowding in the schools is already. But what I want to say is this. I bought my first house on Cypress Branch Road in 1989. It was the, it was the model home for Cypress Gardens. Lisa Torbert, the realtor at the time, said, "You'll be lucky if three cars go down Cypress Branch Road per hour." And she was right. Right now, we have anywhere from 200 to 300 cars going down Cypress Branch Road. And I don't recall any major improvements to that road. And I don't really think there's much difference between that road and Locust. I could have a picture of a car going off Cypress Branch Road, too, to make it look. But there's really not much of a difference, with the exception of the turn lanes into the three new subdivisions. But not to mention the cars that are cutting through to Magnolia already, that are, because of the development that's going on there, because GPS is taking them down Cypress Branch Road. We're already seeing a pickup of, of cars passing through. Not to mention the school buses, which we've talked about, that are picking up kids, and the cars that are parked alongside the road, waiting for that, and, and, and every parent that wants to talk to the bus driver, and a five-minute wait sometimes, waiting for the bus to finish picking up. And I know we're talking about a different situation, that the, the buses may be going inside. But I'm talking about the traffic that we already have, and not to mention the construction vehicles that are already going, because of the two new subdivisions that are going along State Street outside of Magnolia. We're already seeing a pickup of traffic on that, not just the three new subdivisions. I also want to talk a little bit about that wildlife area, because raising, you know, five kids that I have and spending a lot of time back there, there's an awful lot of wildlife back in that, in those woods. And those ponds are tidal, and there's an awful lot of aquatic life, aquatic life in those as well. Relocating them would do more harm than anything. It's just a matter of money. But, again, I, there's been no major upgrades to 363, which is now Cypress Branch Road. That's how long I've been there. It's just, it's unfathomable that we're gonna put more houses, or even considering it with, with the subsystems that we have that cannot tolerate it, and, and the road, which, which already is a dangerous place. So, that's really, that's pretty much it.
Thanks, sir, for your comments. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next person?
Can you state your name?
Name's Robert Flommer.
Yes. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes. My name's Robert Flommer. I am a resident of Cypress Gardens also. Specifically, I live along West Drive, which are the houses that are directly behind the property in question. And after viewing their maps and pictures that they've put up already, there are a couple of questions that I have, being a resident that butts directly up against this property. And specifically, all the homes that are on West Drive that butt against this property, well, back when it's a farm, there's actually a 30 to 40-foot buffer between the back of our property and the farm itself. And that's always been maintained back there because, number one, the ground that the farm sits on is slightly higher than the homes that are along it, too. And what a lot of people don't realize is there's a small, I'll call it a levee, but it's actually just like a three-foot hump of dirt that runs the entire length between the two properties. And the primary purpose of that is to keep the runoff from the farm, the water, the pesticides, the fertilizers, from running into the backyards of all our homes. So, essentially, when you do get the heavy, heavy rains, it'll hit that small levee. And just looking at the map, the water then draws south down into what we like to call the pit, or the swamp and tree line area that's to the south. Now, one of the things I do note is that most of the home property lines that they're building up against our homes are right in that buffer area. And what my biggest fear is, is that little levee will be taken out with a nice big bulldozer, subjecting all of our properties to runoff from that land that sits higher than our land. And that, of course, is going to cause a problem for most of our properties, because our properties are well-inseptic. And if you flood wells and septics, you run into problems that cost thousands of dollars. So, my main concern is asking the company themselves, what are they going to do to ensure, or to ensure that that buffer remains? It's essentially a tree line with a bunch of brush in there. A lot of the people that live back there don't even realize that, that levee is back there. I know it because I've been maintaining it for the last 25 years that I've lived there. And it's a, like I said, it's just a small little hump, but it keeps all that water from the higher land from running back into ours. And just like any levee, if it's broken anywhere along that line, you know, the water comes in no matter what. So, that's one of my big questions. What are they going to do to keep that runoff from affecting our properties, especially with having wells and septics on our properties that it could affect? And my other, other question deals with the conservation area, which is mostly the south side of where they're building. And of course, a vast majority of that area back there is nothing but a swamp anyhow. So, when they talk about they're conserving that area, they're conserving the area because it's a swamp. They can't build back there. And it's the same in our neighborhood. I live a couple houses from what we call a pit, and they couldn't build back there because it's a swamp. Now, if they want to call it conservation area, I'm fine with that. It's wetlands, whatever you want to call it. It's a swamp. And...
Okay, that's, that's it. You may want to direct those questions, the good questions, to Mr. Tolliver. I'm quite sure he has all the answers. Not right now, but after the meeting. So, so thank you very much for your testimony. Appreciate you coming in.
All right, thank you.
Any other question? Yes, Mr. Mills?
Oh, you have a question?
Just a question. Would you pinpoint on that map over there, where your pointer, about where you live?
Okay, so, yep, go down, go down, go down, right there, right in there. There you go. That's where I live.
Thank you.
Yep.
My name is Emily Phelan.
Ms. Phelan, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do. I live in the Church Creek Development off of South State Street. I was a former realtor, and I work back full-time in the schools now. I can attest, I apologize, I'm losing my voice. I work in one of the local elementary schools. I just came off of a two-month assignment assisting a fifth-grade class with 29 students, 10 of which were IEPs. I don't know, those of you that know, that stands for Individualized Education Plan. It means that 10 of these students need to be taught separately because they are... are either far below grade level or below grade level. So, they're expecting one teacher to teach one class 13 different ways. I came off a two-month assignment where I was supposed to be permanently assigned to this class to assist this teacher, and I was still pulled out because we are shorthanded. I was constantly bouncing from class to class helping. That is not an uncommon situation in the elementary schools right now. And I feel like that's an incredible burden on the teachers. We have seven elementary schools feeding three middle schools, feeding one high school with a current population of 2,600. That's not counting any of the elementary school students that have moved in since the new developments have began or the students that would be moving into the district in the future. I understand that the overpopulation of the schools is not the developer or the seller's issue. However, as a former realtor, I would feel remiss if I sold a home to any client without doing my due diligence and letting them know the gravity of the situation their family was moving into. This is going to serve as a grave justice to any students who move into this district because children are being overlooked. Try as we might, we are one to two teachers per room if we're lucky. And we don't even get to stay with our students for long. So, you get to finally understand a student and their needs based on their IEP or their 504, and you're pulled out to assist other children with the same issues in a different class. These kids have trust issues, they have behavioral issues, they have outbursts that the teachers have to deal with, on top of neglecting the gifted students in the class because, well, they can fend for themselves because we need to dedicate all of our time to these current students that need more help. That's what we're facing currently. That is not going to get any better with an influx of 400 students per development with this many proposed developments in the area. I don't mind building. Like I said, I'm a former realtor. I agree. Progress is wonderful, but we don't have grocery stores in the area to support. We have a Walgreens and a Dollar General that cannot support this many people and their needs. It can't support the schools. This development would be feeding into Allen Freear Elementary. Allen Freear Elementary just fell into the redistricting and they sent out 100 students to other elementary schools because of the capacity they were at. So, that means that all of these students would now be fed back into Allen Freear when the entire district just had to rezone to accommodate the students. I feel like that in itself is an enormous problem because how many times are we going to uproot families to redistrict to spread kids out because we just keep adding more kids? Once we ship out 100, we're going to ship in four? That doesn't compute to me.
Okay, well, thank you very much for your testimony. Appreciate it. We've talked about tonight, we've talked about primarily schools at a valid point. So, we've talked about road issues. We've talked about a general area of different subjects. So, I think most of you probably share those comments of the people that's spoken. If you have something different, it's got to be different. I want to keep, I know about the schools. So, I'm in the Caesarotti School District myself. I know all about the school districts. So, I'm going to keep beating it to death all night long about the school district. We've heard that. You got something else you want to bring it in, something new? I'm ready to addition to it. If not, I'm, I'm going to move on. Go ahead, sir.
Sir, can you state your name?
Frank Deputy, and yes, I swear to...
Mr. Deputy, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes, I do. I'm going to be rather informal here, but...
Can you pull your mic up, please? Pull your mic up closer, the mic closer.
Oh, sorry. I'm going to be rather informal here. What I would like to relate is I've lived in Cypress Branch or in Cypress Gardens for 22 years, built my house there. I live on West Drive and I butt right up to the property that we know about. Now, one thing nobody's brought up here, and I don't even know if anybody knows it, but there's a family cemetery in that field right behind our house. Two, two houses down. Actually, it's behind 1312. That's a fact that I've heard nobody say anything about it. They even know it exists.
What's your address?
Pardon me?
Are you saying there's a cemetery behind your house?
Not behind my house, but two doors down in that berm you was talking about, the last gentleman?
Okay. Well, thank you.
Now, number two, we're talking about drainage. I've dealt with some drainage since I've been there. We've been through two hurricanes since we went through there, several nor'easters. And we've actually been flooded in a few times. We had trees fall on Cypress Branch on one end. Well, that bridge back there that heads south is completely flooded. So, we couldn't get out at all. We had another hurricane that had like eight inches of rain come in in one night. And nothing fell, but we could get to Lebanon, but we couldn't go right and go down Cypress, Sorghum Mill to get out the Route 10. We had to go the other way. There's also been several bad snowstorms there that have locked us in there too.
Sir, I do have one thing I want to interrupt you and just tell you. After the meeting, I'd like you to have you give that information to Mr. Tolliver. The state law requires if there's any suspicion there's cemeteries, it's got to be looked at by the state. We had another situation. Developer said there was one grave. Come find out, there's 117. So, I would like for you to meet him after the meeting. And I think the company ought to contact the state to meet the state requirement.
Yeah, I know there are graves back there because I've been back there. It's all overgrown now. So, I, I would hate to have somebody come in and bulldoze it over, if you get what I'm saying.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your testimony.
I'd also like to thank Mr. Mills for pointing out the school bus situation because I drive down Cypress Branch every day. And I usually come by there about the same time the school buses are there. And sometimes getting down just to get to home, it takes a half an hour. And the school buses don't go in most of those developments. They stop out on Cypress Branch Road. They don't go in. Some of them, they do.
All right, thank you, sir.
Can I, can I bring up one more point? I'd also like to disagree with the points they give on Locust Grove Road because that does not. I drive down that road quite frequently and nobody uses it except for the space between Sorghum Mill and the back entrance to Eagle Meadow or whatever it is. That's the only place. There's a whole lot of traffic other than that. And I've been down there with a dump truck coming the other way. I don't have any problem getting through there.
Okay.
And I don't see why I can't put it...
Thank you very much for your testimony. Appreciate it. Next one, are you testifying anything different? What we've already heard, you?
Sir, can you state your name?
Calling on you right now. I'm going to go ahead of you.
Okay.
I just wanted to add something on...
All right. I'm going to let him go first. I just want to make sure you weren't standing there for nothing. Thank you. Go ahead.
Hi, I'm Brandon Scott Albro.
Can you, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to be give is the truth?
I swear. Okay. My biggest concern right now is as far as this neighborhood going up and my generation pretty much being that like target audience, my question is like with what market and how do we expect like anyone my age who's trying to start a family to be able to afford any of these houses right now? Because all I'm going to foresee is either elderly being able to purchase it or, or just, it just like going right into Section 8. Because right now, I don't foresee like any occupants purchasing any of these lots at this given time with the way our economy is.
Okay. Thank you very much for your testimony. Next.
Paul Nicholson.
Mr. Nicholson, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do. I, I wanted to support, clip on to what Bob was saying about the drainage. I do live, I'm the last house on West Drive on the southeast corner. And he said there's a berm by him. At the last two houses, we drain traditionally all of the houses along that edge. And there is on one of their preliminary drawings, a line coming out of my property going down into the, the green area below our homes. And we flood quite a bit. And traditionally, we, we had a drainage system there that the Soil and Water Conservation District put in. But it's not working anymore. The farmer had done some work behind us and changed the lay of the land. And now all the water is kind of hit or miss, but we still drain a lot. My concern is all those homes along that eastern edge, they don't have, they have drainage on the front of the house probably going to the stormwater management area. But the backs of the houses, we have all those roofs and all the backyards are going to come into our yard and probably some of the others if they're going to be doing any construction back there. The other concern I have is that you mentioned the 20 homes that are going to be cutting into the woodland at least. They show a line in the preliminary drawings, which is the proposed woodlot. And I wanted to know how many trees are going, how many acres of trees are going to be removed to put those homes in. Talked about an environmentally sound project. Cutting trees is not environmentally sound, especially with our global conditions right now. Trees are better than open space. Grass is not going to do it. The trees are there. They've been there for years. They, it's a very nice woodlot at the top end. They're going to be taking the prime wood out of there, not the stuff that's in the marshland. It's the stuff on the upland that's going to do the better job of holding everything in.
Okay, thank you very much. Appreciate it. I'll take one or two more and then we're going to call it quits. I think we've heard just about a lot of everything. Good information.
Good afternoon, sir. My name is Jamie Moscoso and my home...
Do you, sir, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I do.
Got to tell the truth now.
So, my home is the second one to the end of West Drive. Yes, that one there. And I just wanted to add to the same thing, that same condition that we have there. When it rains, actually, my backyard becomes a pool. And my, my concern is that they, on the other sides, where actually there's no communities, I see the buffer and all the tree lines. But on our side with the actual community, we have a community there, they're building right against us.
Yeah, I have a question by the minister.
Yes. Is it your understanding or your observation that the, that the property on the new development generally is, is at a higher elevation than the house lines from...
Oh, it is.
It is?
It is.
So, that's not just the few that are down that way? You see that consistently all the way?
No, I actually came to the county court and they sent some people, surveyors, and because I had that issue. I purchased, I haven't even been able to occupy the house completely because the, when it rains, it just, my backyard's a pool.
And you're septic also?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
And I've had to just spend a lot of money there. And when they came, they said that really, there was nothing really they can do because the farmer, he flattened that area. So, my neighbor still has that hump, but we don't. So, the last two houses, we just get everything in there. And I don't see, like I mentioned before, I didn't, I don't see any buffer on that end. And we actually are the community that you see. On the other sides, we don't have the, the space that we're being built right onto. So, we should have some type of buffer with a tree line along that side.
Do you also see any runoff on, when there's bad storm events on the roadway in front of your house? That would be going, then water going through your yard?
No, it just comes...
It just comes into the backyard area?
Yes.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I know the engineers are taking all these good notes. That's a good thing. Okay. You've ever had a chance to talk about, how long is it going to be?
It's going to be a couple of seconds.
All right, hold on a minute. You got to, you got to come up here again, just for two seconds, and then I want you to...
The Fire Department and Police Department for the town of Magnolia is the one that would be supporting this. They were over 125 max capacity four years ago when we went to another development meeting like this. Also, let's talk about the post office. I can't even get mail delivery.
All right, talk about, that's, that's it.
That's it. Sir, I'm part of the public.
I know.
And these things need to be talked about because you're going to put something in that is going to jeopardize all of us.
Point of order. You've had your opportunity to speak.
I'm out of order?
Yes.
Okay.
You've had your opportunity. Thank you. No, I'm not going to start this. Everybody's talked a little bit about this, a little bit about that. And I think we have a pretty good idea as to the opinions in this room.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, it's been a public hearing. I think you ought to allow him to speak.
Allow him to speak?
Yes.
Go ahead.
No, I just, thank you. I just wanted to...
Sir, can you state your name for the record?
Al Claycombe.
Okay. Mr. Claycombe, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
I swear.
Thank you.
I just wanted to confirm on the grave. That is a well-known fact. There's at least one grave. I believe the name is Spinkering, but there is at least one grave back there. What are they going to do about that? Thank you.
Mr. Mills has a question. Are you, sir? Sir?
Sir.
You run, you run fast when I can. Go ahead.
I'll pay for it later.
Is that grave on their property?
Yes.
I'm going to say yes. And what my kids told me, it's about the third house down, which is next to the gentleman that was just...
Is it on, and on the other side or on their side? I mean, is it on, in their field or not in their field? That makes a difference.
Sir, I'm sorry. I did not hear you.
It makes a difference whether it's on this particular farm or it's not on this particular farm.
It is in the tree line in the berm.
Tree line.
Which is part of...
It's part of the, so...
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. On West Drive, correct.
Okay. Anyone else?
Karen Goodling, Carter Road. We also live in Cypress Gardens, right there.
Ma'am, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes. Yes, we're all well-inseptic in there. We're one of the only, we're the only development really, right beside this proposed development that is still well-inseptic. The properties are tight. There are drainage problems. As far as I knew, the farm was in a land trust. It was, I think I'm correct in this. The purpose of a land trust is land and farm preservation. And the other really goal of a land trust is not to burden school districts or utilities like infrastructure such as roadways, water, you know, roads. All, all the infrastructure around there has to do with Levy Court in, in developing these areas and, and offering permits for these developments. We have seen, we've heard a lot of talk about Locust Grove Road. And I think that, that's an excellent idea. It has to come out there too. We don't all want to be trapped trying to get off on Cypress Branch Road when things are flooded or we're asked to evacuate. God forbid that happens, right? But, I mean, we got to think about these things when we put in these huge developments right off of Ponderosa and State Street. We, you know, all, all the areas through here. I've lived there over 20 years. And it, it's just one development after another. And I am glad that we're thinking about, you know, green areas, park spaces. But I really do think that the areas that aren't being developed is because they're swamp, you know, tidal pool areas because of the fact that it's basically sea level, right? There's two different numbers that were thrown around earlier in the long dissertation about Swiftland Development doing this project. And it had to do with woodland. First number, I think he, he said was 31.2 acres out of this giant acreage. And the other number I heard was 18.4. I would like clarification on that as far as what was being said aside for woodland. You know, I heard a couple different numbers on that. You know, I, I just, I really, I want to ask, does the developer have any obligation to any of these concerns? I mean, I would like to see, you know, them do something about, you know, the roads and traffic or, I know it's all Deldat's position to deal with the traffic. We all live here. This is our homes, you know. We've seen our lives impacted. You know, we're retired. Our kids are grown. I care about the community. I worked as a nurse and served my community my entire life until I retired. And I would like to see things not impacted poorly through approving development after development after development. development after development. There's just too many things involved with it. And of course, the drainage issue. You know, I, as far as the trust, I don't understand who pays, like, farms get land trusts, they get like a tax break. How come they can sell to developers later on? I don't understand. Can anybody answer me that?
I'm up to speed on that one. I'm not prepared to answer that, because I know very little about it.
I mean, because, you know, the farmer saved money and then made money, you know, off of selling his land. He has kids that went to the school districts there. I just don't understand. But, you know, I mean, I'd like answers to these questions, and I would like, I don't mind the development, it's, but it has to be done in a way that's not harmful to the community at large.
Well, we deal, yeah, we deal with that all the time. There's always issues, and I think everybody does their best on both sides is to resolve it, whether it's the developer or it's the neighborhood. There's always issues. I've never seen one that wasn't issues. And I would encourage you...
The developer to take more responsibility.
To talk to them. They're the ones that can do it. I can't do it, the commission can't do it, because they meet the county code, to be very frank about it. And we have asked them to do some considerations, but they actually meet the county code. And the only way you can do it is negotiate it with them.
Right.
And see if you can work it out where you all get it done.
Yeah, and get it done in a way that's...
Sure. And thank you for your service as a nurse. Appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. Anyone else? I need you just whiten him up here.
Was that...
Sir, can you state your name for the record?
Nicholas Garcia.
Mr. Garcia, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes, I do. So I grew up in Cypress Gardens. I think we moved in like '93, '94, and pretty much grew up, and I've, you know, been in the pit. That is a, obviously a woodland area, and the fact that they're talking about wanting to move the tidal water to where it's a pond, that doesn't make any sense. I think that's going to affect a lot of wildlife, displace a lot of, you know, animals, and that's, I don't agree with that. Also, I live, I currently live on State Street, right there by the rural farms. And getting in and out of State Street, which all these roads lead to it, that would be Cypress Branch leading to Sorghum Mill, Sorghum Mill leading to Sorghum, and then leading to State Street. Cypress Branch also leads to Ponderosa, which they're putting up a new development right now as we speak, and that leads to State Street. So it's not just affecting just this one little area, it's affecting everything around. So, you know, you drive up and down State Street, you go past it, there's cars everywhere. If there's an emergency, we can't get anywhere. My mom's 66 years old, she lets me know every day. If there's an emergency with her, and it takes me longer than five minutes to get there because it's overpacked, I'm going to be very upset. And there shouldn't be any problem for police, firefighters, first responders to show up and be able to get ahold of these houses, you know, with all this new development going in. It's just ridiculous that there's going to be so many more people, cars, houses added to this area, which we don't need. We're overgrown, as it is, we've been overgrown for years. And to keep adding to it and adding to it is just ridiculous, so that's all I got to say.
Thank you very much for your testimony. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Teresa Garcia.
Ma'am, do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give is the truth?
Yes, I do. Okay, so listening to all of this today, I have just a comment to make. It sounds to me that you're more interested in the micro aspect of this versus the macro implications of it, because you're talking about, well, that's not my job, it's this department, it's that department. We're here just to approve this permit. Well, this permit, it affects all of us. You know, you're talking, okay, we heard enough about education, we heard enough about the healthcare, we heard enough about this, this and that. It's not our job. It's your job, because it affects us. So think about the macro, not just the micro. That's all I have to say. Is that okay? Any questions?
Commissioner has a question he wants to ask you.
I don't mean to be offensive, but I take offense to what you're saying.
Okay.
I'll speak for myself, not for everybody up here.
Okay.
I come from a small community that has pretty much every problem that you mentioned tonight. We get about 3,700 cars a day that come down the one road that goes through our town. Not a problem with Del Dot, it's a problem with the school system, it's a problem with drainage. I live in Little Creek. I was the mayor of that town for 12 years. I'm intimately aware of these kinds of problems. We here have a very important role to play. It's not a very big role, and by your definition, it's a very small role, but we do see the bigger picture. We hear it all the time. You're here tonight, we're here every month, and we hear this every time we come here, year after year. We know the problems that are going on, and they're big problems, and they need to be solved. One of the ways we solve these problems is how we vote. We have legislators that are supposed to be doing certain things that help us deal with certain issues. We can't solve all those problems. We can hear them, and we sympathize with them. And I personally sympathize with everything I've heard tonight. But I have a small role to play, and I'm happy to play that small role. So I'll do the best I can within that small role, but be mindful of the fact that I am aware of the bigger picture, as is everyone else here. So thank you very much for your time.
Sir, that is exactly what I'm talking about, because, you know, you're saying, you're going to approve, you've approved this development, okay? So it doesn't matter if they go up the chain or anything to the state, because it's approved, and we're just going to have to deal with it, from what I heard on the grapevine, so thank you for your time.
Not everything gets approved here, as you know.
I hope not. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? Anyone else opposed?
If there's anyone that's joining us online that would like to speak in opposition to this application, please indicate by raising your electronic hand or pressing star three if you're joining us by phone.
Anyone else opposed? If not, the meeting is adjourned, and we'll make a decision for next week. Thank you for coming.
If everyone can move their conversations into the hallway, we have to finish the meeting, please. You can just go. Please move your conversations into the hallway, please, so we can complete the meeting.
All right, just carry your conversation outside, please. Thank you. Appreciate it. Okay, that's over. Public comment? Nope, we just ruled them out. That's good. Okay, commissioner comments, rather than commission comments. Any commissioners? No commissioner comments? Staff comments? Attorney comments?
No, sir, none. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Move to adjourn.
Okay, got a motion to adjourn?
Second.
And it's been second? Call the roll, please.
Mr. Peterman?
Yes.
Mr. Servan?
Yes, to adjourn.
Mrs. Carter?
Yes.
Mr. Goffrey?
Yes.
Mr. Mills?
Yes.
Mr. Davis?
Yes.
We are adjourned.